John here. Craig in.
Yeah. You mean when you're ready, see it's how it's 6:30, we'll get the meeting started. Call the Board of the Planning Commission, please.
Benno.
Here.
Glisch.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Smithback.
Here.
Mozon.
Here.
Holdup.
Here.
And Majewski. And Schnelli, he's out tonight.
John, I can call the Village Board to order.
Glisch.
Here.
Beshen.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Bealow.
Here.
Wunsch. And Van Kampen.
Here.
New items of business for discussion and/or potential action are the amendment to the Village of Oregon Comprehensive Plan to Change Future Land Use Map Designations for Lots 2, 4, 8, 9 in the Oregon Parks Neighborhood. Parcel numbers listed here. From two-family residential to mixed residential and to change the future land use designation for future phases of the Autumn Ridge subdivision parcel listed here. From recreational business to planned neighborhood. I would like to verify that the proper legal notices for public hearing have been done.
They have.
And then a presentation of our proposed amendment by our village staff.
Very own. Now, I decided to give the... Well, then I offer this one. This should be pretty straightforward. So Sonia, at our last joint meeting, presented these or introduced these comp plan amendments to you all, I think, in early February. So two different areas here. Again, this is updating. We are doing our full 10-year comp plan update, so that's still planned and that will be adopted hopefully by December. In the meantime, these two projects would like to move forward a little bit sooner, so we are... We're doing these comp plan amendments now. So first is the Oregon Parks parcels. So I'll scroll here for Jeff and just for orientation. These parcels are just north of Omni and get Carleen out of the kid chair there. Okay, so over here we have the Oregon Parks parcels. You're good. And then the Foxborough parcels we'll talk about a little bit later. That's down by the golf course, so. So the next slide kind of walks through the request by Altera. So the developer over here is All-Star Properties. They did some comp plan amendments and some replating here to have some duplex lots. This is near Liberty Park. There's kind of an island of land that's undeveloped between Beehive, Omni, the park there. So some of those parcels are there and then some are just directly north of Beehive. There are changes envisioned, just duplexes here. And then they have been marketing these properties for sale. Altera Builders has these four lots, duplex lots, under contract and would like to do a model here that they've done elsewhere, I think in Fitchburg. It's a fourplex, so it's kind of an over-under duplex situation. It would still, you know, be about the same footprint as a duplex, a little bit wider. And there's kind of a rendering there I took from one of their other projects. So those would go on three... Actually, they would all be corner parcels, just to kind of get the garages and everything in there. So our comp plan sees this as not two-family residential, but mixed residential, which is kind of the multifamily. So it's a relatively minor change and actually something I'm looking at our new comp plan to see if we can allow more flexibility for kind of these middle-density options so that whether it's a townhome or duplex, as long as the density is within a certain range, maybe we don't have to come back through the comp plan amendment process every time. So this is the first amendment. Any questions on that change? Again, this is not approving any site plans or anything like that. That would still come at a later step at the Planning Commission. But it's just the intent for changing the land use to allow instead of two units, four units on a parcel. The next change on the next slide shows Autumn Ridge. So it's actually changes for... It should read phases four and five, not three and four. Phase three, Jeff can point out, is actually this kind of upside-down L-shaped parcel. That will be the one moving forward with approvals on the plat and kind of all their other entitlements later this year. And that would be kind of the next phase to go in. Part of the approvals that they'll need later this year is going through CARPSY, the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, for what's called a USAA Urban Service Area Amendment. So CARPSY works at the DNR to regulate the areas so we can provide public water and sewer service. And anytime we expand those areas, we have to apply to CARPSY. They look at a lot of environmental features, look at land use. They want to know how many units are you expecting here? Kind of what's the capacity of your wastewater treatment plant? And are there going to be issues that this development would cause down the road? So part of that application process, it's very lengthy and expensive, so we've asked the developer to, as part of kind of... This is the Foxborough rearrangement that'll happen over the next decade or so, going from 18 holes to 12 and adding some more two- and single-family residential. We're going to go ahead and just do phases three, four, and five as part of that Urban Service Area Amendment, just for efficiency. And plus, it helps the CARPSY application because they like to see kind of the system-wide holistic approach of how a stormwater are going to be managed and all these, you know, ponds and drainage ways and everything are designed to work together. So it is a lot easier just to do the application. But part of that application, they're going to look at our future land use map, and if they see, oh, this is just intended for recreational business, golf course, why are we talking about putting homes here? So our comp plan map needs to line up with the application that's being put forward. This isn't saying that, you know, these are going to be developed any sooner. It's... They'll still be down the road. This will just be one step that the developer will not have to do in the future. Yep, so that's the second amendment. Any questions on that one? Okay. So I think, John, we can move back to the public hearing now.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing by me, by Greg. And I would like to acknowledge submitted comments for public record.
We didn't have any comments.
And at this time, then, what we would like to do is open the opportunity for the public to speak on any of these amendments. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on these two items? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And I will move into discussion of the proposed comprehensive plan amendments by the Planning Commission and the Village Board. We've all seen this before, but has anybody got questions or comments?
I have two questions on Autumn Ridge, and it's the slide right before next step, so...
Where are they going?
Yeah, I'm showing page 13 in my handout. So you want this one? Yeah, that'll work.
Yep.
Okay, so the first question is right above phase five, in the upper right, there's a shape that looks like a baseball diamond or something. I don't know. What is that? Part of stormwater. That's okay.
That's a pond, yep.
That's what I figured, but it just wasn't called out. Yep. And then the only other question I had is the property to the south, separate property owner, I assume, is there any impact to this development that will impact that plot?
In terms of?
Future development.
So that's actually a single-family lot in the town of Rutland, although it's accessed off of Town of Oregon Street, Johnson Avenue. So that's a pretty large parcel. You know, I... It's just a kind of a farm at, you know, large residential rural home, so I don't know that there's any, you know, development interest from that neighbor. I don't... We have had some... We had a neighborhood meeting in October. I think we had this room packed with maybe about 80 or 100 people. Some people from the town, too. We didn't hear from that specific landowner, I don't believe, about any concerns. Obviously, with each phase two, we'll kind of be taking this step-by-step, so we will probably have neighborhood meetings before work starts on each one. And if there's any adjustments made to the plat, you know, there's a park in here and all that stuff, too, so those will all be run through, you know, village channels and town channels as it relates to them. But there is one... And this is kind of down-the-road thing, but there's one lot down there that may actually become... May stay in the town of Rutland and not get annexed in the future because it'll have to be... It may have to be accessed off Johnson, just the way it's shaped. But otherwise, all these other lots will eventually be annexed into the village, you know, assuming the developer meets our requests. But phase three will just be the first annexation request that'll come later this summer.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Because we've seen this before. Seems pretty straightforward, a little housekeeping stuff. All right. Then I will move on to resolution recommending the amendments to the Village of Oregon Comprehensive Plan. I'll entertain a motion. So moved, we have second?
Second.
Second by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thanks. And then we'll have a resolution for the board at your meeting this coming Monday. Thanks, guys, for being here. Appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to the end of our agenda. Item seven, approval of the March 2nd of 23 Planning Commission minutes. Right, motion carries. So moved. Motion by Patrick, second.
Second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on, item eight, public appearances. At this time, we have the opportunity for anybody that's in the audience to speak on an item that is or is not on the agenda. This is a chance to sort of speak on a project that are problem or issue that you would like to talk about, noting that we do have a public hearing already on tap, but you're welcome to talk if you'd like to. Anybody? All right. Moving on. Communications of this way of business, none. We have no unfinished business, so on to new business. A public hearing. End discussion and consider recommendation to the Village Board for conditional use permit to allow a group development in the General Industrial Zoning District at 880 Market Street. Applicant is Odom LLC. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Any Elise, would you like to give us a little bit of a background on this, please?
Sure. So this property is on Market Street, just a little bit north of the pharmacy, Hometown Pharmacy, used by Mid-Central Electric. They are businesses booming, and so they would like to add another building to add employees and continue to provide space for their work. This is in General Industrial Zoning District, and because this new building would not be attached to the existing building, it's not an addition, it's a separate building. Our code requires a conditional use permit to allow a group development, which is for two buildings that serve kind of a primary use on the building rather than one building and a secondary building, like a shed or garage or something like that. So we did some similar process for Market Street down kind of closer to the Farm Center about two years ago, so similar process here. Site plans are attached. No major concerns about the addition. Though the last kind of approval that I've been waiting on, and we've been going back and forth even just today with the fire department, is fire lane access and kind of distance for hoses. So we do have contractor here to speak a little bit about... He spoke with Scott from the fire department today. And Jeff, I actually just, you know, do a plan that Steve had submitted to Scott earlier today. So, long story short, there's still some back and forth with the fire department, so I... Kind of depending on where this goes, this is the latest plan. It would actually take away about four parking spaces, too. And I think the way that they had their plans were shown in the packet, there was going to be one space for every employee. But, you know, as the business would grow, more parking would have to just kind of go into the street for on-street parking. So not sure where you guys want to go with this in terms of review. If you're comfortable letting myself and Steve, the contractor, and the fire department kind of approve a fire access plan. We can... You could conditionally approve pending the fire department sign-off. That's a pretty normal thing we do. And then I just won't take it to the Village Board until we get that fire department sign-off. If you'd like to, you know, kind of see revised plan, and if you're concerned about the parking spaces here, too, I think, you know, we might need to table this and come back with the revised plan. So happy to have Steve come up here, too, to talk a little bit more. But if there's anything else, you guys have questions for me, I'm happy to answer. But we're talking about metal building here would be similar in, you know, height and color materials to what's existing there. Removal of a small garage, and it's kind of set back a little bit. There's a loading dock area, so kind of our standard warehouse construction here.
Another question I've got is if we... I personally don't have a problem with allowing staff to approve this. My question has to do with if we lose those four parking stalls, do we make the building non-compliant, and would that have to be a part of the conditional use?
I think we would need to add that probably is a condition of approval, that the parking requirement. Right now, for this use, it's just one space for every employee at your largest shift. And again, the business is growing, and we really don't have a good way to kind of know, oh, they now hired two more people, and now you need to add two more spots and everything, too. So it's, as it exists, not a perfect system, but I think if we just call that out and say, you know, given, you know, there's a minimum number of parking spaces they need to have, maybe calling that out or, again, staff approval on a plan. I'm not... I know we've dealt with over on Burr Oaks, some on-street parking issues with all color, and that signage has kind of helped alleviate a lot of that parking on the street. Jeff, I don't know how you feel about, you know, street parking here? Because the fire lane is really what's taking away those four spaces.
Not overly concerned.
I'm not concerned about the loss of the four parking stalls from the, you know, use of the building either. I just, how do we... How do we, as a planning commission, make this conditional use? Can we just add verbiage to it at this, or do we have to have an updated public hearing with that new caveat added?
Yeah. I'm not sure, because I've never really done that before. We could, you know, add that for now, and if Martin tells me or Matt tells me that we need to come back with like a GDP revised plan, then we'll just have to do that and get that ready for probably the May meeting.
I just... I'm not saying that it's a bad project, and I'm not saying I'm not in support, but I am. I just want to make sure that we have ourselves taken care of in case the next person.
Yep.
So I guess that's all that I had. Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, we'll ask the petitioner and something. All right, then we'll move on with the agenda, and we will move to the petitioner comments. Anybody here to speak on behalf of the project? Please come forward and give us your name and who you're with, please.
I'm Steve Meyer with Meyer Construction. We've been hired by Midwest Electric to build the building or at least do the plans for now and hopefully build the building this year yet. So with the parking, I know the building could be sold down the road, so that's an issue for the building. Currently, they don't use all the spaces. A lot of their employees carpool together, so... But our goal was to try and get one parking spot for every current employee.
Anybody have questions for petitioner? You had talked about a metal building. There was a... I saw information about it, and then there was a picture. Is that the material colors that you were looking to use on the building itself, like paint and a red trim piece?
They actually have picked a blue color. So they felt it was a... The kind of a medium blue is their company color, and that's what they're currently painting their existing building.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. We just want to add... We'll add that to the comments when we approve this. All right, anything else? All right, thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this project?
Tom Dorn, Dorn Hardwork.
All right.
Do I have to? Just concern... No, no great concerns. First off, question, the proposed building is about a 50 by 80. What's the size of the current garage there? So how much of an expansion is that?
It'd be removal of the existing garage and then replacement in its base. I think it's...
It's...
Oh, there may be...
20 by 20? I don't...
Yeah.
I believe it's 30 feet by 30 feet.
30 by 30, okay. Okay. So it's maybe four times the size or something like that. My concern only is water retention and grading. I don't, you know, I don't know... That's a low area, and right behind... Right north of Dorn Hardwork, kind of near the boundary, is it's just very low, so we tend to get water collecting there in... After the winter melt and in heavy, heavy rain. So that's my concern. Just a concern. So I don't know about the grading and whether they have to go through some kind of water retention for their site to get the approval.
The... Yeah, the overall increase in impervious areas is really negligible because most of it is considered impervious back there already. Because we've run into this on a couple other of those, you know, development in that area since it's kind of so industrialized.
Right.
I'm just trying to pull it up here so we can kind of see exactly. Yeah, they're your backdoor neighbor here, aren't they? Yeah, so as I understand it, you know, their plan is to try to get all the stormwater into an area, I believe, is it still over here?
Yep. Yeah, there's a retention base there.
And then it's piped, actually, so it'll actually now, instead of just sitting back here, running off wherever, is to get it out to the storm sewer.
That'd be good.
It's a very shallow storm sewer, as far as there's almost no grade on it whatsoever. But from what I've seen so far, it should be at least a, you know, improvement over what's there now.
What's there? Okay. That's really my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
From the public.
All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the planning commission. Anybody have any questions, comments? Is there? Really straightforward, okay. At this time, then, I will close the public hearing. And I'll move into discussion and possible recommendation to the Village Board regarding the conditional use permit to allow for a group development in the General Industrial Zoning District at 880 Market Street. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Larry. And Larry, is that... Could you please move into the comments that it will be, the building will be in the blue color? Can you just... Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Should that also be contingent on fire department approval?
Yeah.
And contingent on fire department... Thank you.
I'll second that.
Patrick seconds. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, review of possible approval of a site plan for 880 Market Street. Applicant is Odom LLC. Fairly straightforward, we already said it. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, and John, just to note, too, I will do some checking on the... Obviously, once we have kind of the final fire approved, fire department approved plans, if the parking spaces are not meeting the requirement, I'll see if we do need to have a separate approval for that or if we're... If we can just add that maybe as the condition.
Perfect.
Yeah, on the site plan.
All right, is there a motion?
Move to approve contingent on verification of parking requirements.
Motion by Patrick, second by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item C, review of possible recommendations to the Village Board regarding public art locations map. Randy, would you like to... Or Elise?
Jeff. Jeff?
Sure. All right, so, oh, it was probably a couple weeks ago, Randy and I did go around the village and kind of identified, I think we had 25, but there's actually a few more than that even. Or, well, there's one more than that. Come on, zoom in on this. Oh, here we go. 27 locations, because one of them, well, I'll mention, we missed was a traffic box right here at the corner of Wolf and Jadesville Street. But basically, locations that we identified as possible sites for public art. This doesn't mean that we're implementing 27 pieces of public art right away, but we felt it was kind of important to go through, have those identified. This went through the Park Board, if I remember right. Yep. And it went through, it came out of the Art, Public Art Committee. And so these are just some locations that we've identified. And are you going to be talking about the type of art, too, right now, or this just shows some of the art pieces that have been selected pending approval of the art location map?
Village Board will... It'll be on Monday.
Okay. And then one of the things like we've talked about, Randy, do you want to talk about wrapping of the cabinets at all? But...
So if anybody's familiar with Madison has been doing this for some time, wrapping of the traffic boxes, here's a picture of them. They're quite big, and to make them a little bit more attractive, they're wrapped in vinyl. And so in your packet, you have several... We solicited designs from the public. These are some of the designs that came to us, the Public Art Committee, as potential designs to wrap on the traffic boxes. We just thought it would be a nice thing in addition to the sculptures to add a little bit more color throughout the village on the boxes.
Randy, do you want to...
Pablo submitted this one. Pablo Picasso.
Do you want to remind the Planning Commission, too, about the funding for these, your grants, the grants that you applied for?
I think we actually have three grants. Three grants. One is over $100,000, and then there were a couple small ones. And so for the sculptures themselves, we're partnering with Eau Claire, and we signed an agreement with them to get five... We'll get five sculptures this year, eight next year, eight the following year from Eau Claire. Eau Claire is actually installing 90 sculptures this year. So they've been doing this for quite a while, and so we're partnering with them. They're helping us sort of get started on this. We'll get five, five of those that were on the sheet are coming. And so we have all the funding to pay for all this.
Thanks. Well done. So this, so everybody understands, these are possible locations. Not all of them will be implemented at this time, maybe on a rotating basis, maybe semi-permanent or permanent, but this is a location.
Right. We envision, we'll be constructing, I'll just call them pedestal bases around the village. Concrete pedestal bases for most ever, all of them. The idea is just to... I mean, it's public space. It's use of public space, and we want to be able to make sure that, just like anybody else, we're following the same rules as everybody else in identifying where we're putting things. Generally, most of these that you'll see are generally not massive pieces, so a lot of them will fit on either a three-by-three or a four-by-four. or a four by four pedestal base. Um, Public Works will be building the bases probably onsite and just pouring them. Um, we do a great job with concrete, so.
So, maybe I can just clarify. So the, the pieces that we're getting from Eau Claire, they, they, we, they're on loan for a year. And then next year, they'll rotate out. We'll get eight new ones, and in the following year, you'll see it on this, so, some of them on the bottom, um, I'm actually donating two pieces to the village, those two on, on the bottom. And then we are working with a couple of local artists who didn't want to work with the Eau Claire, and so we're going to work with them individually to, to get a piece.
Excellent. Any questions? And, and we'll entertain a recommendation to the village board, um, supporting the public arts location map. Is there a motion for that? I'll move. Anybody second that? Patrick will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Review and possible recommendation to the village board regarding resolution twenty-four dash, twenty-three dash oh four to vacate and discontinue a portion of Mary Hill Drive. Anybody want to speak on that?
Sure. Um, so this is kind of a housekeeping item from the Rhydian Greenview Preserve Development. Uh, Jeff, if you can scroll to page fifty-six there, there's a, a small map. Um, when Jim Lees and his family did the last phase there, there was a, a plan for Mary Hill Drive to curve to the right there and continue down that way, but with the plat that Rhydian has presented, it would kind of straighten out there. Yep, thanks. So this is just vacating that curve, and then that, that street will kind of, um, continue on straight for a while. Um, that's all kind of been part of the plat, but part of that, um, part of the process is needing to vacate the right of way for that section of Mary Hill Drive, and then the new plat will, um, reestablish right away in that area. So this is just a...
Formality.
Formality, yeah, just a, um, recommendation. This will pass forward to the board, and then I think this will be on their next, um, their, their Monday night meeting. Keep this moving along so we can get the, the plat recorded.
Excellent. Thank you. I think we've seen this before. We even saw when the Rhydian came through with theirs that they were vacating this.
Yep.
As Elise said, it's just kind of housekeeping. Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved here.
Motion by Larry, second?
Second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item is for discussion only, conceptual review for a plan for possible multifamily development at fifty-two twenty-seven County Highway C C.
Oh, missed one, John.
Sorry. Getting ahead myself. Uh, we're jumping back. Review of possible recommendation to the village board regarding a certified survey map at two ten and two twenty Jamesville Street. Applicant is the property. Sorry about that.
All right, so this is the, um, it's kind of kitty corner from Little Buddies over here. This has formerly been used as King K Lawn and Sport, most recently as, I think, C and K Rentall. Um, and the property owner has, um, sold the property to the Fields. I think the closing is June first is the plan. Um, but, uh, kind of funny enough, I don't think anybody really realized this was on two different parcels. It's kind of one lot has always been used by the same business. So, um, the Fields are planning to do an addition, small addition to this building, which will be coming before you at a future meeting. So, um, part of that is to, first step is combining these two lots into one. Um, and then coming forward, probably with a G D P S I P, hopefully at our May meeting. But no issues here. Shared this with the village engineer. He took a look at it and, uh, meets all of our size requirements and furniture requirements for the central business district.
Fairly straightforward. Anybody have any questions or comments? And we don't need to, I noticed that, um, um, this came through fifteen years ago, and they did some remodeling to it. I remember there's a roof that was put on it, and the roof overhangs the, the public right of way, but I, it's not at a height that I'm worried about. I don't know if you just need to make a comment on it, or just sort of go?
I don't think on the C S M, um, combination, I think when we get to the, the G D P S I P, we could just make a note that, that hangs over. Again, I think the, it shows here the edge of the building is right there on the property line, which is what the goal of central business is anyway. Fill up the lots with buildings, so, um, yeah, I think we'll get that when we get to the site plan. Just acknowledge that.
Okay. All right. Let's, uh, I'll entertain a motion regarding a recommendation to the village board regarding the C S M for two ten and two twenty Jamesville Street. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move by Patrick, second by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, item F, uh, for discussion purposes only, conceptual review of plan for possible multifamily development at fifty-two twenty-seven County Highway C C. Applicant is Regency Property Management. Elise, you want to give us, uh...
I'll kick it off and then hand it over to Jake here, um, to introduce himself and share a little bit about, um, Regency. But this property, we've talked about a couple of times in a few different contexts over the last few years. So this property is currently owned by the Epps. Um, this is right across from Mulligan's and currently in the town of Oregon. Uh, been for sale for probably a little over two years now. Um, this property was looked at by North Point Development for a workforce housing project, about sixty units, back in the summer of twenty-twenty-one. And they were kind of under, uh, a deadline to apply for WIDA funding later that fall. And so some of the issues regarding, um, highway access, and also they were, um, trying to work with the property owner to the south there to acquire more property. They were just kind of facing some, uh, obstacles that didn't align with their timeline. So they pivoted their project that's up in the Oregon Parks neighborhood, just other side of, um, Mulligan's and Journey Above there. Um, we did a comp plan amendment last year. The Epps decided to go ahead and move forward with that to make the property more marketable. So they changed the future land use, or you all changed the future land use from planned business to multi, the mixed residential for multifamily. So that was approved in twenty-two. Um, and then since then, uh, Regency has worked with the Epps to get this property under contract. And, um, is proposing a, a multi-story, um, multifamily building, sorry, four stories, uh, with underground parking, surface parking as well. Um, they would just be looking to do a pro, a project on the Epp property alone, so this is about three and a half acres. Um, and obviously, there's annexation, um, you know, connection to the, the highway. And Jake's, uh, been able to connect with the highway department, learn a little bit of more about some of the restrictions and, um, options available based on some of the historic kind of agreements on these two properties, this one and the one to the south there. So, um, again, this is just for conceptual plan only. We would definitely want to have a neighborhood meeting, I think, if, um, the developer decides to move forward. So we would, um, you know, do that, probably a next step, and then working on annexation, and then the, the zoning and site plan approvals at that point. But, um, Jake, I'll ask you to come up if you want to share a little bit about, uh, Regency and the project itself, and then, um, welcome any feedback from the planning commission.
Sure. Thanks. Hey, guys, how's it going? Uh, my name is Jake. Like Elise said, I'm representing Regency Property Management. Uh, we are a family-owned, uh, local Madison company, and we've been around since nineteen eighty-eight. Um, currently, uh, manage and develop apartments, and, uh, we have four locations right now and, uh, looking to expand. We've kind of had our eye on this, uh, parcel for, I don't know, over a year now, I think. And, uh, got it under contract and are doing our due diligence to, uh, make sure that, you know, it could work out for Oregon. We think that it would be a great spot for some apartments. Um, I think, you know, as you guys see apartments going up, we, we need a lot more apartments in the Madison area and surrounding Madison area. Uh, we think this would be a great location for it, and, um, definitely welcome any feedback from you guys. Obviously, it's a very preliminary at this point, but I think we have a pretty good conceptual idea of what we could accomplish. Ideally, you know, we were initially trying to get, uh, the north and the south property, but, um, at this time, it doesn't seem like that's going to be realistic. So we, you know, kind of had to reevaluate our plan, but we think that we could still do a really good quality development, uh, just the north parcel there. Um, that would be kind of a great west side, uh, development, uh, for Oregon, as well as a good, you know, kind of entryway to the Bergmont development as well. Um, I think Elise is putting on the screen, these are a couple of other developments. We just finished this one, it's Lincoln Street Apartments. We finished that in twenty-twenty. It's in Verona. Um, and then, uh, that is a ninety-unit apartment development. And then we also did this one, which is called Prairie Crest Apartments, also in Verona, um, back in early two thousand. So, um, we, uh, develop apartments, and then we manage them, and we kind of hold them for the long term. So it's kind of a legacy, uh, team and, and, uh, development company. Um, so we kind of plan on, you know, doing the development and then holding it and taking really good care of it and, uh, watching it go into the future. Um, as opposed to, you know, develop it and fill it and flip it. So, um, it's kind of our philosophy for the long term, and, uh, we see Oregon as a, a, a great place to be.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have questions, comments on what is shown here?
I, I have a couple. Um, first thing that stood out to me was the model parking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I see you have one point seven stalls per dwelling unit. Is that comparable with our code? Is that in excess?
Yeah, Jake and I talked about this, uh, a couple of days ago. So, yeah, it's a little over our requirements. Right now, we're at one point five spaces for every unit, regardless of size. So, um, did mention to him that probably on the future plan, the planning commissioner would like to see that scaled back to our requirements, and then can always dash in areas for future parking if needed.
Nice. I'll get down to that because it just is quite a scene of asphalt.
Yep, yeah.
Um, no objection to the project, no objection to the setback. The only item that kind of popped out to me is the entrance for the underground parking. You've got to go all the way across the, the lot, which seems a little crazy to me. Uh, is there a reason why you can't bring that entrance or have a second entrance adjacent to the initial apron? So to the east end of the, of the, of the unit?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, anything is possible. You know, this is just, like I said, a very preliminary drawing. Um, this is kind of how we saw the building fitting the best in the land, giving it setback from the highway. I thought that that was very important. We didn't want it, you know, it's a highway, it's not like it's downtown Oregon, like, uh, the Jefferson building there. Um, so kind of having some setback and then some landscape buffering was really important to us. Um, absolutely, sides on the parking lot, that's less to plow. That'd be, that'd be fine. Um, and then as far as the entryway to the parking garage goes, I mean, there's, there really is no reason that it's over there. Um, that's kind of where it ended up. That's, it's actually where it is for, um, our other development that we have. It's kind of on the other side of the parking lot, which does actually work out pretty well. Um, that way, you know, people that are coming, say, like, to the leasing office, kind of get first pick for parking and whatnot, guests. Um, but if that's an important thing, I mean, we're, we're, we're open for feedback and would be willing to adjust.
I think it would be nice to have two entrances, but if I had to choose one, it would be the closer one.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Wouldn't want that traffic passing forward, you know, in front of the whole building.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Um, the other thing I'd like to see is some type of central axis. So you enter the building at the middle, and I'm concerned about people crossing through that lot between cars. Uh, so that island that's in the middle, uh, that, that is more on axes with the entrance.
So it's, so there's a...
Yes, right where you're pointing to.
Like a path, a pathway that's straight through here, so you might have a walkway island here.
Like, kind of like a crosswalk style?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I get a little nervous when people are passing between cars, uh, both for the, for the safety of the cars and for the safety of the people.
Sure.
Um, and then the last thing that just popped up to me right now is looking at the south lawn, I'll call it. There's not much there in terms of structure, you know, so think about that. It would be nice to have some type of covered, you know, um, area grilling or something.
Maybe a pool or something.
Well, I don't know where you want to go with it, but, um, I think for sure a grilling area.
Yeah, absolutely. I kind of agree. I thought that that would be a great place to, you know, kind of dress that up a little bit. It's a nice courtyard. It's protected back there, so, yeah, absolutely.
John, one thing that I forgot to mention, um, would be part of the discussion with annexation. So the lot right now is actually, Jeff, I don't know if you have the aerial image, but because it's still in the town of Oregon, uh, the right of way is kind of the old county right of way, and all these properties that have been annexed over time into the village, like to the east and west there, there's a kind of a step down there, so there would be about fifteen feet that would be dedicated, um, for a future right of way. And obviously, hopefully in time, we have all these properties in the village, and we can do the rebuild of C C and kind of do more of that urban section with trails and, um, sidewalks and all of that. One issue right now, um, would be pedestrian access, so if you kind of zoom out, although it's surrounded by development, it's actually kind of an island in terms of accessibility to sidewalks. So, um, you know, there's the condos to the east, to the south is the, the thing, property owner. There's a pond to the west, and then there's the townhomes, which have not, that second phase hasn't been built yet. So I want to make sure that, you know, if this moves forward and these other developments aren't, you know, kind of right on the tails, that there's a kind of an approved route for people to go, and, you know, I don't know if you guys are going to allow pets, but even just to go for a walk, um, or walk your dog. We know people would probably just take the path of least resistance and cut through and go around the top of the pond, but, um, encourage Jake to, you know, if he moves forward, maybe it's working with fiduciary to get some kind of a easement approved, you know, on the top of the, um, north of the pond, or, you know, along kind of the right of way there, if there's the ability to put in like a, um, to the north of that parcel, like a temporary sidewalk or something, so that people can at least connect to the sidewalk on Bergmont. Um, so we'll have to kind of see where that goes, but I want to make sure that people don't feel like, yeah, I see a sidewalk from my apartment building, but I have to actually get in my car and go out and then, you know, park the street. It's not going to make sense, and people will, again, they take the path of least resistance. But I think, thinking forward about how can we make sure people have a, a designated route, take it out and go for a walk and, um, be safe doing so is important.
Good point, good point. Excuse me, anybody else?
I've noticed the height of the building at four stories. I think that, I mean, it's a little softer, might be easier to take at that part of town. It's, I think that's the biggest building in Oregon would be four stories right now, so.
Yeah, I think the only other one might be Wolf Street, um, just south of headquarters. Those two buildings on the other side of Wolf Street are four. They're big, yeah.
Jefferson Crossing Three?
Yep, three stories with underground parking.
It's a tall street, yeah.
Downtown.
Anybody else? Uh, I, I have to piggyback on exactly what you said already. Um, I think that the scale of the building is, is a lock for this area. Um, I think even if you were to, uh, go so far as to step the building, maybe from three to four stories, if you wanted to do that, there's nothing else out here that matches that kind of height. So I, I, I think that the, the site plan itself, in my opinion, is, is kind of rudimentary. I think that, um, you have some flexibility now that you're going to be lessening your parking stalls, um, to take the opportunity to do something that's a little bit more creative. Um, I'm nervous about two hundred and sixty parking stalls all going to one curb cup. Um, I, I think that that needs to be looked at and possibly considered as to going on to C C a right turn only lane. I don't know how you do that. It's not on your property. I think Patrick brought up a great point about having to cross all the way, um, even, uh, taking that, uh, underground access and putting it adjacent to the private access aisle, um, so that at least half of parking stalls could come through instead of having to go through a parking lot.
Just come off the driveway.
If you put a flat roof on this, it would help with some of the height, but if you're going to put a pitched roof on it, you're talking about another sixteen feet.
Yeah.
And that's a whole new elevation.
Yep.
Um, so, so that's something to consider as you do this. Yeah, I, I just, there, the building itself, um, I, it, it's just rudimentary. It's simple. I think that, um, it doesn't take into context where it's at, and I think that, uh, maybe even turning the building ninety degrees or something, I don't know. But it's just, um, I don't think that it, uh, I don't think it took into context where it was at.
Okay.
So I think you just need to take a step back and, and think about where this is and how you can massage that. you can massage the height of the building and maybe match that.
Sure.
And whether that's the shape of the building in a, in a Z shape or an L, who knows? But I leave that voodoo up to you.
Okay, yeah. Even, you know, we, we tried multiple buildings too. So, you know, we've got some different options and conceptual ideas. It just seemed that this design, you know, enabled us to fit the hundred-and-fifty apartments most efficiently. So, but no, definitely, you know, and, you know, considering the height too and like step-down variations is something that we talked about a lot too, just to kind of add some, you know, context to it. And then definitely would, would most likely be doing the flat roof just to avoid the additional eighteen feet, like you had said.
John, doesn't this, I mean, I, I thought, I think you've seen both ways. Seems like this kind of provides the more buffer to the south private property because this is going to be, it's generally a fairly quiet area, I think, you know.
I'm not denying.
There's also just one single family.
I'm not denying that it is a nice asphalt area. It would be a perfect spot for amenity.
Yeah.
My, my question is, is this the right shaped building in that mass?
Sure.
At this, in this layout?
Sure.
So, you know, you've got duplexes to the east, you've got duplexes to the west, they're two stories with a pitched roof on them, you know. Ideally, it takes them to, let's call it three stories aesthetically. So maybe you start to think about along those sides, do you get along with a three-story building and in the middle mass, maybe you go up to a four? I don't know. You know, that's, like I said, the stuff that you work on. I just want you to think about a bigger picture than just this posted stamp of the property lines.
Right, yep. Yeah, no, thank you, yep.
Yep.
I know, it's, it's kind of hard to tell without elevations as well, just because, you know, you know, how, how much time we wanted to put into it, you know, just for the, you know, conceptual meeting, but.
Yeah. And you just want to, you want to run out the flagpole to see if we even like it.
Exactly, yeah, yep.
And I don't think that you heard anybody say that we don't.
Yeah. One note on the driveway access and Jake, maybe you can add to this, but when he spoke with the highway department, it sounds like once this property would be annexed into the village, the village, even though this CC would still be a county highway for the, the time being, the village could request another access point to there. So if it's, you know, right in, right out, or again, just kind of trying to split that traffic into, because if everybody's leaving for work or school or whatever at the same time, it could get, you know, real congested at that one access point. So I think that's something we'll dig into a little bit more moving forward with the site planner view.
Yeah, I think that'd be wise. It's just a lot for one curb cut. Is that good enough?
Unless there's anything else I can do for you? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, unless there's any other feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, staff reports, status of current upcoming projects. What's the case there?
Any questions? I mean, I, well, we're kicking off the concession stand construction. We had our construction kickoff for that for JCPark. Are actually kicking around renaming JCPark. Huh?
Row Park?
Row, it's after a couple of weeks, last couple of weeks, it'll be Row Memorial Park. But, but we want the kids to enjoy it, so let's call it something else. I know. But we will be kicking off construction of Janesville Street and Washington and State Street here in the coming months. And that will get very busy and very disruptive.
When will they field three for playing?
At the earliest late fall. It just depends on how things grow in and kind of weather. I mean, obviously today is a phenomenal day, but it's going to be cool and cold again, so. But yeah, so we'll be, we'll, you know, it'll give us this year to, to wrap up things out there. There's still quite a bit of landscaping, cleanup work and everything that has to be done. And they just got the backstops up and the fencing finished today, so. And we are, we are ninety-some odd percent done with the village hall, the new village hall. So we are scheduled to be moving in there in the next couple of weeks here. And so our next plan commission should be in a nice new facility.
Maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
I'll let you know.
Solid maybe.
That's, I give that a solid maybe, yes.
Because it'll be May fourth, so.
May fourth. Yeah, that is a very maybe, but we'll see. But coming soon.
Stay tuned.
Any other questions on things going on, things happening?
The Habitat Project's finally rolling. If you've driven down that way, a lot of trees are down, a lot of dirt moving around.
Don't say trees are down.
I'm going to say it because it's pretty obvious, so. But yeah, so excited to see that that's moving forward. They're obviously putting in a lot of landscaping too. But pond in the back, I think it'll be really nice development when it's all said and done. But yeah, there's a lot of work going on down that way if you head over there.
All right. Upcoming meetings, next one is May fourth here, maybe not. And then June fifth here.
That, that'll, I'm going to go ahead and bet the June meeting.
Put that one down for solid.
Yeah. We'll have it right at the big, big letters at the top of the agenda if the addresses change, so.
Solid as three-minute concrete.
Yeah. Larry, if you show up here and there's no cars, right, Larry? If you show up here and there's no cars, you go out the other direction.
Thanks for your time.
Planning staff meeting agendas, couple of them in your packet, anything we should be talking about or just kind of an FYI thing?
Just FYI, like working on a lot of internal stuff, starting to meet with Arm Ridge again soon to work on some agreements, get the annexation rolling. But yeah, no major projects coming down the pike. We get a little bit of a breather this summer.
Items for future meetings, possible zoning text amendments. We don't want to get into that right now, so it's just on there.
That'll be, that'll be May, actually have the list now, so we'll start kind of picking that apart a little bit more at the May meeting.
And who's this to the last item?
Well, wait, well.
Sorry.
I don't know if the plan commission wishes to recognize the outgoing president, Randy and his.
I think that would be good.
That's what I thought.
Yes. So I think at this time, we'd like to thank Randy for his time on the plan commission as both a member and as a member of the village board. You've done more as a member of the plan commission and a member of our community and we're grateful for it. Thank you.
We don't want to vote on it because we, what if we get a nay?
All right. And with that being said, I will entertain the motion to adjourn. So moved by Patrick, second by Eric. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your time.